I'd like to welcome everyone to the Clarkston District Library Board of Trustees Meeting for July 13th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. The meeting is called to order. Let's have the roll call, please, Julie.
Jan Gaffney.
Here.
Dan Green, absent. Allison McFadden-Kiesling.
Here.
Nancy Moon.
Here.
Marilyn Palmeroy.
Here.
Ann Rose, absent. Chris Scholl.
Chris?
Here.
Okay.
And Julie Meredith here.
Okay, I'll accept a motion for approval of remote participation of board members.
So moved.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the remote participation of Jan Gaffney, Allison McFadden-Kiesling, Nancy Moon, Marilyn Palmeroy, and Kristi Scholl. Please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Kiesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Palmeroy?
Yes.
Chris Scholl?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion is passed. I'll accept a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. Please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Kiesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Palmeroy?
Yes.
Chris Scholl?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion is approved. Now is the time for the call to the public, if we have any public with us tonight. If not, it'll be short.
It's too nice of a day, everybody's...
Right, they're on vacation. All right, call to the public is closed at 6:34. I'll accept a motion for the consent agenda, six items.
We approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
It's been moved and...
Nancy, Nancy second.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Nancy and I got a thing going here.
Okay, yeah.
They want this meeting to clip along, they want to get back outside.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Does anyone want to talk about any of the six items individually? If not, please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Kiesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Palmeroy?
Yes.
And Chris Scholl?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, motion is approved. Library Directors Report.
Okay, so, there's quite a few things on here and it's not so much the same as it has been. In terms of a general update for COVID responsibilities, those are remaining fairly much the same. I've been monitoring the executive orders and assuring we're in compliance with guidelines, meeting remotely each week with the department heads, meeting remotely each week with the PR staff, meeting remotely each week with the administrative staff, attending weekly remote meetings of the Michigan Library Directors held by the State Librarian, checking in on CIDL virtual programs and services and providing staff with positive feedback, attending remote meetings, webinars, reviewing best practice documents from the CDC, Library of Michigan, et cetera. I've been meeting with the Friends of the Library regarding book sale options going forward, they've been meeting almost every week, preparing the building for upcoming phases of reopening plans, so purchasing supplies, monitoring daily screenings, reviewing executive orders, which there have been 147 of now, I believe, posting signage required by executive order, laying out staff workspaces to allow for proper social distancing, developing programs, plans, and staffing schedules. So that's just the COVID stuff, but the rest of my report is stuff that's actually like back-to-library kinds of things, and so I'm pretty excited about that part. The first one's not so much fun. Due to an offer for a full-time position, we will be losing part-time administrative assistant Erica Cloutier. She's worked very hard and we will miss her, thankfully she has a setup to welcome a new person to fill her role. We will also be saying goodbye to our Head of Circulation, Annette Cheney, who will be leaving at the end of August to spend more time with her grandson. She will also be sorely missed, but has created a well-trained, hard-working team that will ease the transition to new leadership in that department, so we'll be preparing to post those two positions. In terms of a financial update, the library has HAP as its health insurance provider for full-time employees. We received notification from HAP that as part of their efforts to support small businesses in reopening, that they are reducing healthcare premiums by 5% from July 1st to December 31st of 2020. The library pays 80% and the employees pay 20% of their healthcare premiums, so this 5% reduction in the total premium has been calculated out accordingly, and both the library and the employees are seeing some cost savings, which is really nice.
That's nice.
Yes, very nice. In terms of project updates, the work on the administrative office is well underway. The old furnishings have been removed, the safes have been tack welded together and temporarily removed from the office, and painting is complete. The remaining steps include repair of the carpet where the safes were secured, installation of the new furnishings, and moving the safe back into the room. The room is large enough to accommodate social distancing for two workspaces as planned, but we have also purchased plexiglass shields to temporarily make that separation safer and more distinct. In 2019, the Clarkston Independent District Library won the Vote for the Best competition in the library category, which was the first year libraries were included. Our library has been nominated again this year. The voting for the 2020 competition runs through July 14th. You can vote at www.clicondetroit.com/vote-4-the-best.
And you can vote every day.
Yes, thank you.
I know this because I have been voting most every day.
Excellent, excellent. We're super excited, last I heard, we were in the lead, so I'm really excited about that. At last month's meeting, the library board approved a postcard project to assure we are reaching out to our patrons who may not be tech savvy or who aren't following us online. The most recent postcard to be distributed highlighted our curbside service. The next postcard will go out that will focus on summer reading challenge, obtaining a library card, and a note from the library director. Thank you to our marketing team, Trevor Nguyen and Adrian Palumbo, for their hard work keeping us on the front of our community's minds as we navigate our ways through all of these new library services. I know some of you have received that postcard already in the mail.
That's great.
And last, our virtual summer reading challenge is going very well. In addition to the virtual programming that our youth department has developed due to COVID restrictions, they have added new elements by providing grab bags of program supplies that can be picked up through curbside service, so kids can participate in craft projects as part of these virtual activities. They also added drive-by programming with the Parking Lot Princesses Parade on July 25th, in which patrons can drive through the parking lot so their kids can talk to their favorite princesses. That's going to be fun.
That does sound like fun.
They pick them up from their car, yep. The adult department will be hosting a drive-in concert on July 29th featuring the local musical duo Reasonable Fact Simile. In addition to fun activities, the summer reading challenge is also designed to keep people reading. Children can register and log the time they read to earn raffle tickets toward gift baskets for prizes. Adults can participate in an online bingo card of library activities to earn entries in a drawing for gift cards. I want to thank our youth and adult librarians for creating all these great activities and working really hard this summer, especially doing everything in a new way. I also want to thank our marketing team for sharing the details throughout the community. And then, last but certainly far from least, thank you to Bowman Chevrolet, our summer reading challenge program sponsor, and Vibe Credit Union, our prize sponsor. It's the hard work of the libraries team and the generosity of these local businesses that make this summer project such a huge success, so we're really excited, because it's going very well despite the craziness of what's going on this year.
Great.
That's good to know.
Yeah. Any questions or comments for Julie?
Only that I'm sad about employees leaving us, but I understand the motivation in both of those cases, but it's a shame because they both have been really...
Exemplary.
... assets to the library.
They have been, it's always hard to lose people. They become part of our library family and it's always a little harder for us to let go than maybe it might be for other places, so.
That is right. For regular business, we've kept Joe waiting for a while here, it's time for our 2019 audit report.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to thank the board for allowing us to serve as your audit firm, very much is a pleasure working with the library staff. The audit process went very smoothly, and in this 34-page audit report, what matters the most is the opinion that we provide on the financial statements. Does everybody have any electronic copy that you're able to view?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll read off the page number at the bottom of the page.
Okay.
If you turn, it would be page one of the audit report, it's the third page of the actual PDF report, and this is where we provide the opinion on the financial statements, the very last paragraph at the bottom of page one. We write, "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the library as of December 31st, 2019." It would explain that as being a clean opinion, this is the highest level of an opinion that we can provide on financial statements. The technical term is unmodified, but it never sounds flattering to say that. In fact, I had one client, she was in tears after I told her we were giving them an unmodified opinion, so leave it to an auditor to come up with a term like "unmodified" to mean something good, but this is a clean opinion, this is the highest level that we can provide on financial statements. And what it means is that the library's controls are suitably designed to make sure that you're providing us with accurate and timely information, so that we can verify and confirm. We work with various banks and we work with the state of Michigan to verify the state aid, there's various third parties that we work with to confirm and verify the numbers within this report. You guys have suitable controls for a library the size of yours to make sure that your financial statements are accurate and timely, so definitely kudos to the staff for getting to this point. Should always be the library's goal to have a clean opinion on their financial statements, but it certainly means something to achieve it. We've had larger organizations with either qualified or adverse opinions, so. I won't go through every single page of the report, but if we skip ahead three more pages and get to, it would be page four of the printed copy of the report. The very top section says Management's Discussion Analysis. This is the first section after the opinion, and I would think of this as being the Cliff Note version of the audit report. It's about six pages of financial highlights. We get to see some two-year comparative data to get a feel for the trend that the library is heading toward with regard to its revenues and expenses and assets and liabilities, and it also explains how all these financial statements relate to each other. So this first page, the first three bullet points at the top show the financial highlights. The first bullet point shows that $3.5 million was the library's net position. This is the long-term basis of accounting, and what that means is we're taking a very long-term outlook at the financial condition. We are including long-term capital assets in this number, so some of these assets aren't necessarily spendable, but it's a very long-term outlook, same methodology a corporation would use to value its finances. So $3.5 million of total net position, theoretically what that means is if all of the assets of the library were sold, all the liabilities were paid off, it would be about $3.5 million left over. For that reason, it's very much a theoretical number. If we back off the illiquid assets, so the building and the books and the equipment and all that stuff, we get $1,683,594 of unrestricted net position. That's a much better representation of what your true liquidity is as of December 31st, 2019, so we're backing off the items that you can't necessarily spend on a day-to-day basis. Second bullet point down, we're still on the long-term basis of accounting, this is, it's called the accrual basis of accounting. If you take all the revenues and all the expenses, we saw an increase in net position of $232,827, so we're depreciating the long-term assets, and we're looking at all the revenues, all the expenses. Again, the accrual basis of accounting, this is the same basis of accounting a corporation uses, we would call this net income if we were in the corporate world. So we definitely like seeing revenues exceeding expenses, that tells the readers that the library is in a better position as of December 31st, 2019 than it was as of December 31st, 2018. So things are trending and continuing to trend, I should say, in the right direction for the library. And then the third bullet point down, so the first two bullet points are on the long-term basis of accounting, the third bullet point is focusing just on the general fund, so what is the unassigned fund balance in the general fund? There was $1,620,805. That represents, that's the best representation of how much is truly available to cover the day-to-day cost of running the library. So that's available to cover wages, utilities, supplies, things of that nature. And if we take that 1.6 million and we divide it by the annualized expenditures of the general fund, you guys are 81.7% funded. In other words, you've got about a little over nine months, not quite 10 months' worth of reserves sitting in your unassigned fund balance, that gives you plenty of room to weather storms for COVID, or hopefully we don't have to deal with this type of extreme, extremely extenuating circumstance in future periods, but it is nice to have that type of a buffer in your unassigned fund balance to cover these types of storms that, from time to time, do happen. It also gives you guys the ability, you've got enough there, if there's a capital project that comes down the pipeline, you've got some available to be able to cover those types of projects as well. Not too much fund balance, not too little, you're in a very stable position as of December 31st, 2019, just looking at the general fund alone. If we go two more pages, it will be page six of the printed copy of the report, just a couple line items that I wanted to point out here. This is a two-year comparison of the assets and liabilities of the library. Very top row shows that the cash increased from 1.55 million as of December 31st, 2018, up to 1.8 million as of December 31st, 2019. So your net position increased, so did your cash, that certainly is a good sign, certainly is the most important asset, we do like to see that trending up as well. And then if you look five rows up from the bottom, we see this funny line item called Taxes Levied for a Subsequent Period, and it's still a relatively new category, it's called Deferred Inflows. It's an important number, though, what that number shows is as of December 31st, 2018, the library levied on December 1st, $1,954,940. Now that was the amount of your taxes from your 2018 tax roll that were available to finance, I'm sorry, your 2017 tax roll, my years mixed up, your 2018 tax roll to finance your 2018's operations. So $1.95 million, that number was up to $2,38,316. That's the amount of tax revenues that you're going to collect in 2020, based on your 2019 tax roll, I'm getting the years all mixed up, but basically, next year, this year 2020, the library's going to have about $2,38,316 of tax revenues, and that's up about 5.5% because of the increased taxable values in your district as of 2019. The 2018 revenues were up 4.8%, so you've got back-to-back years of increasing taxable values on a percent basis of 4.8% and 5.5%, certainly a very good sign in your tax base, and we're seeing that with a lot of our communities in the state of Michigan, and who knows what COVID is going to do to that in the upcoming years, but at least we know 2020 is up 5.5%. So that certainly is a good sign. The very next page gives us a look at the comparative revenues and expenses for the last two years, and three rows down from the bottom, again, the property taxes came in at $1,888,754 for the 12 months ended December 31st, 2018. That number increased to $1,962,228 in 2019, a very healthy increase, again about 4.5%, compared to 2018, and entirely attributable to increased taxable values in your district. And then if you look three rows up from the bottom, the change in net position, or net income, so to speak, for the last two years, has been positive in 2018, $264,541 compared to $232,827 in 2019. So back-to-back years of increasing net position, a very good sign without question. If we go ahead now to page 13 of your printed copy, we get to the fund balance sheet, so this is on the fund, the modified accrual basis of accounting, I would think of this as being cash basis. So what are the immediate resources that the library had at December 31st, 2019 to cover the immediate liabilities as of the same date, December 31st, 2019? So you see your assets, you see your liabilities, there's no long-term assets, no long-term liabilities, we're excluding fixed assets from this analysis, but you can see that there was $1,620,805 of unassigned fund balance, so that's where that number's coming from that we saw in the financial highlight section. If you turn two more pages now to page 15, we get a look at the revenues and the expenditures during 2019, this is on the cash basis of accounting, so there were some capital outlay projects that the library incurred during the course of the year in 2019, so we don't see as big, as large of an increase in your fund balance for that reason. Your increase in fund balance was $132,229, again, cash in exceeded your cash out by about $132,000 during 2019, still a very good sign, increasing fund balance is always a good thing, and it was very much intentional, so that was a budgeted change in fund balance during 2019. Just a couple more quick things that I wanted to point out, if you go to page 29, so all the way on the other side of the footnote section of the audit report, this is the budget-to-actual report, so we're looking at the final amended budget for the library for 2019 compared to the actual revenues and expenditures. I just wanted to point out here that if you look at the expenditures, actually revenues and the expenditures, everything came in favorable, so your actual expenditures came in under the budgeted expenditures, your actual revenues came in a little bit more than your budgeted revenues. Very good sign, that tells us as your audit firm that you really have your finger on the pulse of your finances throughout the course of the year, so very prudent financial management by both management and the board. Most of our local units have some type of hiccups in their budgets, you guys, that's as clean as you can get with your budget, so definitely a good sign. And the last thing that I wanted to point out is, if you go to page, well, it would actually be page 29, if you flip two more pages, the page numbering starts over again, so it'd be page two at that point. This is a side letter that we provide to our audities, and professional standards require us to include this. During the course of conducting our audit, we don't necessarily provide any type of opinion on our client's internal controls, but we are required to test internal controls as part of our verification procedures, and if we see controls that aren't adequately designed, or maybe we do see a control that's well-designed but not getting carried out effectively on a day-to-day basis, we're required to put those in writing and bring those to the attention of the board, the governing body. And all that I wanted to point out here is the absence of any findings, so it's kind of a back-handed compliment. We can't say good job, all that we can do is not write you up for having findings, so certainly kudos to the staff and to the library for not having any type of significant deficiency or material weakness, a lot of our libraries do, but it was a very clean audit process, we didn't have any adjusting journal entries. You guys have appropriate controls in place to make sure there's checks and balances, multiple eyes looking at significant transactions, just all around a very clean audit, so those are the highlights that I had, and I'm certainly happy to take any questions the board might have.
Thank you. We did read it all, and we're glad you were doing it, not us.
Yes, and I'm glad to see that we didn't have any issues with controls, because with a small staff, I know that that has been a challenge for us in the past, and it's nice to know that we seem to have gotten to where we need to be on that, so thank you for letting us know.
Okay, are there any other questions for Joe?
I just wanted to thank Joe, and Lauren was our field auditor, they did a great job putting all this together, it was very difficult doing it from home, and they were both super patient about it, and they worked really, really hard. And I also want to say that last year, Neil was the field auditor, and I think part of the reason that Joe is seeing such good, clean work this year is because Neil was fabulous in terms of answering questions, because, you know, it was the first time that they had been our firm, and so I always grill the auditors about, well, we do it this way, is there a better practice that we could do? And so he was very, very much willing to assist us with that, it was really nice.
He was, really, because I spoke to him at length last year, too. He was very, very helpful.
Yeah, and Lauren, I think, just felt a little more disconnected because she was trying to do everything from home, but she was so patient through the whole thing, and she would send me, you know, what about this, and what about that, and just, you know, it was hard going back and forth, and so I felt for her doing that, but she did a great job with it.
We definitely sent a lot more emails in 2020 than we have any other year, that's for sure.
Yeah.
It's been a challenge, I'm sure, across the entire public and private sector.
Yes, definitely.
Definitely. But Joe and his staff are always very helpful, and when I say, okay, well, this is the way we do it, but, you know, can we tweak it, can we tighten it up or whatever, and we really appreciate when they give us some coaching so that we do better the next year. My goal is always to learn something new for next year.
Okay, and we agree with that, so.
Yes, that's a good goal.
In that case, I will accept a recommendation to accept the audit.
I move that we approve the audit as presented.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we got that.
Allison already seconded.
That's too quick for you, Nancy.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the audit as presented. Are there any final questions or concerns? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
I have to do roll call.
By roll call.
Sorry.
I miss that. One of those every meeting.
All right. Jan Gaffney?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Kiesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Palmeroy?
Yes.
And Chris Scholl? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joe, it was a very clear presentation.
Excellent presentation.
Really good.
Thank you very much. If any questions come up during the air, don't hesitate to reach out to us.
Okay, thank you, we will.
And we'll see you next year.
Good.
Stay safe.
Only under easier circumstances. In that case, we'll move on to, speaking of circumstances, the updates since the closure and discussion of the current executive orders.
Okay, so, I have all kinds of exciting things to share with you. Well, as exciting as can be expected, I'll start with the updates. I'm going to do a share screen, I'm going to try to do a share screen, let's see what happens. I'm going to share my screen, and I want this one. Okay, can everybody see that, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good, excellent. Okay, so this is the document that we've been looking at for the last, since May, however many. So I'm going to scroll through quite a lot of it, and I'm going to skip down to the bottom and to show you where we have added on to it. Here's the through 6/8/2020, and now we're doing through 7/13/2020. So since this last, the last board meeting, we have added full curbside pickup, and that began on June 15th. We have our Summer Reading Challenge for all ages that began on June 15th. We have grab bags of craft supplies for hands-on programs for both youth and adults available through our curbside service, that began on July 6th. We entered stage four of the library's reopening plan, which is curbside and computers. Stage three was just curbside, stage four is curbside and computers, and that began on July 6th, Monday, July 6th. This included opening the community meeting room as a socially-distanced computer lab with eight computers, the copier, the printer, the fax, and the scanner, and notary service is also available by appointment, and we'll talk a little bit more about that shortly. We've also added Neighborhoods of Stories, which is something you may remember from last year. It's an outdoor storytime, and now it's a socially-distanced outdoor storytime in collaboration with the Orion Township Library, and that's at local parks, and that started, I think, two weeks ago, two weeks ago, I think. And then on July 13th, there was an emergency alert about masks sent from the governor's office, and I don't know how many of you saw that on your cell phones, but Michiganders are required by executive order to wear face coverings in public indoors and crowded outdoor spaces. Businesses must refuse entry or service to those who do not wear a face covering with limited exceptions, and so that was something, we already had face masks in place as a requirement, but that was an expansion of the executive order. So I'm going to stop showing this screen, and I will show you next piece, which is next piece, which is update of the executive orders themselves. And we've been doing this every month. The executive orders, they start, they stop, they get rescinded. So I want to get you on the, on the page where we are right now in terms of executive orders. Can we all see that? Did I do that right?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, okay. So the review of the current executive orders, and this is as of July 13. So this is, there were two new executive orders released on Friday, which is, you'll know, caused some scurrying with your board packet. So we have been under Executive Order 2021-10. That's the temporary restrictions on certain events, gatherings, and businesses. That was put in place, and it rescinded executive orders 69 and 96. This order lifted the stay-at-home order, permitted libraries to open on June 8, and outlined safety measures for reopening. The guidelines in this order include restrictions on indoor gatherings to no more than 10, outdoor gatherings to no more than 100, requiring workplace safeguards as described in Executive Order 145, which used to be Order 1, used to be Order 97. This also requires social distancing and requires face coverings in enclosed public spaces. So we are still under Executive Order 2021-29. That's temporary authorization of remote participation in public meetings and hearings and temporarily relief from monthly meeting requirements for school boards. This is the one that makes the library board meetings virtual. That one is set to expire on July 31. We aren't sure if it will be extended or not at this time. If it, if this is allowed to expire, I would recommend that the board potentially move to a hybrid meeting like we did. I think our first meeting where we had some board members who were present, some board members who were logging in. You have in your policy that you may attend meetings remotely. So for those of you who are more comfortable being remote, you can continue to do that. For those who are more comfortable in person, we can do that. It is still hinged on these hybrid meetings on whether or not that Order 110 allows us to have more than 10 people in a gathering. So the reason that's a problem is because when you count the number of people, there's seven people on the board, plus me, plus somebody to take minutes, plus somebody to record the meeting. So in an in-person meeting, we're already up to 10 before we even let the public in.
And we can't not let the public in because it has to be a public meeting.
Why we have virtual meetings. But the point at which 110 loosens, or gets rescinded and changed, whatever, when that group restriction of 10 rises and/or 129 is rescinded or expires, then you could do a hybrid meeting. So that's kind of where we are, because I know everybody's sort of curious about where we are with that. So Executive Order 145 is safeguards to protect Michigan workers. And that one is the replacement for 97 and 114. Libraries are designated as retail facilities, and it outlines the regulations for safe return to work and reopening includes things like you must have a COVID plan in place. You have to have procedures, training, screening of employees, enhanced cleaning, face covering, social distancing, all of those things. We have all of those things in place. 145 replaced, well, 90, 114 replaced 97. 114 didn't include anything new for libraries. And 145 replaced 114, and it also didn't really include anything that we weren't already doing. The new one, the other new one is 147, which is masks. So this one reiterates that face coverings are required in indoor public spaces and includes requiring face coverings in outdoor public spaces when social distancing cannot be maintained. So that part is new. Service may not be provided to individuals not wearing a face covering except for limited exceptions. So this one actually says that we must refuse service if people are not wearing face coverings, except for limited exceptions, which have to do with ADA not being able to medically, unable to tolerate a mask, children under, it used to say children under two, or the CDC says children under two. This order actually says children under five, but children between the ages of two and five are encouraged to wear masks, but they are not required to wear masks. So, so that is different as well. So where are we now? On July 6, the library moved to phase four of our reopening plan, which included the community meeting room being transformed into the computer lab, as I mentioned, and that we do have appointments for computer use. We are continuing curbside service and have added those grab bags that we talked about. We've also added our drive-by and drive-in programming in the parking lot and outdoor storytimes at local parks in collaboration with the Orion Township Library. So that's where we are right now. So I'm going to stop sharing that.
That was succinct.
Yes.
It's not easy to make all that succinct, I'll tell you. I'm getting better at it, though. After four months, I'm getting better at making executive orders succinct. At least I like to think I am, maybe I'm not, I don't know. Maybe I'm just kidding myself. Okay, so I'm going to share my screen again. The next thing I want to share with you, all kinds of exciting things to show you tonight. So this, this one, I'm going to review, you all approved last month our, last month, our reopening plan, which has six stages. So we are currently in stage four, and I thought it would be, because we moved to stage four on July 6, I thought I would go over the details of stage four so you really know where we are. So this is actually, it's kind of a draft document from when we put this in place. But what we did was we lifted the stage four requirements that were in our actual policy, and we put them in a document, and then we filled in the pieces of the details. So starting with, employees are permitted to return to work. So we've assigned shifts in the implementation of this. Any staff member may be asked to work in any capacity. So that means everybody needed to be able to move around and do different things. And the staff has been great about that. So if you're in the building and you are working in your office and the phone is ringing, you're tapped to answer the phone. If, if somebody needs you to grab the curbside phone and run a bag out to the curb, you are asked to do that. If you need to be in the computer, answering phones or the computer, what is now the computer lab, the meeting room, that is something, you know, whatever you're able to do, everybody's pitching in. It is an all-hands-on-deck situation at this point. Because we do have some people who still are doing some work from home, some work here. We have librarians that are in the middle of virtual programming, and they're using the conference room for a studio, so all different, all different things like that. Okay, so activities that are permitted at this stage. We have some limited access to the building. So what that means is we've got a, we've got a gate that separates the lobby from the rest of the building. That gate is partially down. It's, and we do not let the public go past that gate. So when they come in, they have access to the lobby. They have access to the public restrooms that are out in that hallway, and they have access to the community meeting room. Patrons may have, this is part of the policy. Patrons may have in-person conversations with library staff provided that social distancing and safety protocols are followed. So as we said, the gate is down. We have occupancy standards for the building. So the lobby, we can have no more than five people in the lobby, and that includes any staff that may be in the lobby. We do have a welcome station when you walk in the door, where we let you know the services that we are offering at this time. We offer free masks. And if somebody is medically unable to wear a mask, we have been making face shields on our 3D printer, and we are offering those. We also offer alternative service. But ADA says that we cannot restrict somebody's services because of a medical condition. So we encourage them to use the alternative services for their own safety as well, obviously. But, but that's where the face shields come into play. We added all the additional signage. We do have the six-foot social distancing reminders placed on the floors. We have directional arrows for traffic flow just in and out of that room. Not really necessary, it's a big door, but we do have one that shows going in and one that shows going out. We have disinfecting wipes. Hand sanitizer is available when you enter the building and also in, in that computer room. All of the computers have keyboard and mouse plastic covers on them. You need to make an appointment to use a computer. Or if you walk in, we log you in and you have an hour. You can stay longer if no one's waiting, but we are trying to kind of stick to that hour to maximize the usage of that room. It hasn't been real busy yet, so we've been in pretty good shape. After somebody uses that computer, the staff member in, in gloves and mask removes the keyboard cover, the mouse cover, disinfects the entire station, puts on new keyboard covers and mouse covers before the next person can come in. And we do make sure that there's time between computer sessions so that that cleaning can take place. The weather's been spectacularly summery, and so we haven't been super busy in that, in that regard. We've had maybe three or four people in there at a time, so social distancing has been pretty easy. The library will have access to computers for research to look up requests for library materials. So as I said, we've got the public computers, the public printer, the scanning and fax station, the public copier, and we do have a station where people can look up library materials if they would like. We had a, I didn't put the diagram in, I'm sorry, I didn't bring that in. But essentially, we have eight computers that are distanced around the outside perimeter of the room. And then we have the copier and the scanner and the fax, fax in the corner. When you walk in, there is a person, there is a staff member staffed at a table right inside the door. They do have a plexiglass shield. They are wearing face masks. They have access to gloves. They don't have to wear them all the time if they're behind the shield, but they have gloves for cleaning purposes. In terms of social distancing and safety protocols, the masks, we do have a mask requirement. We have put in the additional signage that, so that people know that there is a mask requirement. It has to be on the doors, both the staff entry and the public entry. And we do have our face shields available. Those are free of charge. We've not had any issue up until this point, knock on wood, in terms of compliance with masks. So social distancing, as I said, we've got the markings all in place for social distancing. We have the plexiglass in place. The person who is at the welcome station has a plexiglass. The person who is in the meeting room has a computer lab, whatever you want to call it, has a plexiglass shield. The computer desks are six feet apart. Each desk only has a single chair. And then here's the interesting part. So if you need assistance on one of those computers, because we got so savvy at remote login while we were working from home, we are actually set up so that the person who is sitting at that table, that staff member, can log in and take control of your screen and assist you while staying at that desk, which provides more than adequate social distancing. Staff members who are, who feel more comfortable may wear a mask and they may approach and help if they would like to. Those that are doing that may also wear a mask and a face shield if they would like to do that. But most of the people who have come in have been pretty self-sufficient, and it's just been basic answering questions of how to use the printer and things like that, which, because the room is all in one space, it's pretty easy to do that. Traffic directions, as I said, we haven't really been busy enough for that to be really a problem, but we do have, we do have arrows in place. We do have a set of, no, absolutely no more than 15 people in the computer lab, five in the lobby. We have social distancing dots in the hallway, and we have the chairs in the lobby socially-distanced in case we were to fill up the lab and have people who needed to socially distance. We also did put a mechanism in place that if we needed to, that they could sign their name to a sheet and go wait in their car, and we would call them to come in when they're done. That's, weather's been too lovely, that has not been an issue at all. But we do have all of those procedures in place should we need them. And then, as I said, occupancy, maximum 15 in the community meeting room and a maximum of five in the lobby. We are limiting groups, so we are encouraging the patrons to come in with as few number of people as possible. Once again, that hasn't really been an issue. Computer terminals, as I said before, we've got the keyboard covers, the mouse covers. We do have an assigned person who's making sure that those are clean. We are limiting food and beverage in that room, not permitted, unless for medical reasons. Signage. And then, of course, we had to have training in place for the staff. So we had a staff meeting in which we went over the cleaning procedures and protocols, which cleaners you can use on touchscreens, which ones you can use on the monitors and the keyboards and that kind of thing. And then our hours of operation are our standard hours of operation. So we are open Monday through Thursday, 10 to 9, Friday and Saturday, 10 to 6. We are closed on summer Sundays. Where we are with that. And then the last, but not least, we are doing notary service by appointment. It can be handled in the lobby or curbside. And then we have a mechanism in place that people who do not want to come in the building can email us documents, and we can print them out for them. We did that when we were still just doing curbside, and so we left that in place in case we have people who are not comfortable coming in the building, but they do need something printed. So we have a mechanism in place for that. They would just call the, call the library, or they could call that curbside text phone. And, I'm sorry, curbside cellphone and ask for assistance in the way. So we've come up with a variety of ways to help people in this limited situation in terms of access to the building. Any questions about any of that? No?
No.
All right. We're almost to the end, I promise.
For, for this week.
This, well, exactly. So the last part that I have is, is to talk a little bit about the next steps and kind of where we are. Let's see, I will close this document. And this is my next steps document. Oops. So I can get to my need and erase your screen. Okay. Okay, so this is our next step. These are, there are two stages remaining in our reopening plan. Stage five and stage six. So stage five would be opening the library building to the public with conditions. So that would mean allowing the public beyond that security gate that's in the lobby. The requirements during all stages, just to review, per CDC guidelines. We are asking people not to come in if they have a fever of 104, 100.4 degrees Fahrenheit or 38 degrees Celsius. We are checking staff as our daily screening as they come in. We ask patrons not to come in with any symptoms of an infectious disease. We do provide notice on the library doors of the patron responsibilities in this regard. And those are in both doors as required. Any requirements for staff safety precautions will be adopted separately, and the staff will be informed. So we've done, we've done all of that. And then the library director shall determine the cleaning protocols. And Arlene and her team have been doing an excellent job. They have added some new things. They have actually a, a table on all of the doors in the various rooms in the building where they mark when that room was cleaned last. They have some procedures in place. For example, in our conference room, which is not available to the public, but it is available for small socially-distanced in-staff staff meetings of, you know, two or three people, four people, whatever. And the protocol for that is that when the room has been cleaned, we close the door. And then when you're done using the room, you leave the door open. And they are cleaning it regularly, but if, if the door remains closed for a period of time, they know they don't need to hurry in and do that room because nobody's been using it. And so that gives them the freedom to focus on the high-touch points where we have been and leave that room to sit for some period of time. Okay, so then the library opening with conditions. The activities that would be permitted, that would be in addition, would potentially be, and we can pick or choose as we go. Programming that is in person would potentially be a possibility. Meeting room use for library-sponsored events only. The computers would be open for public use. We're doing that as part of stage four, but at this point, at the stage five stage, they would be moved back into the main part of the building. And then any additional public use of the building, social distancing, those protocols would still remain in place. The hours would remain the same. Not knowing when this would take place, Sunday hours would be reinstated if, if it is appropriate to do so after that particular time, so essentially after Labor Day. And then that last stage is stage six, where things would go back to some semblance of And then that last stage is stage six, where things would go back to some semblance of what we were familiar with four months ago or five months ago, prior, pre-COVID. So some of the things that I wanted to point out in this particular, we're moving forward and trying to figure out what comes next. One item I'd like to discuss is the quarantining of staff. So we went over at the last board meeting, the way that we are doing our daily screening for staff. So we have a sign-in process. The staff comes in, the staff entrance, they come to a table where they have to check in. They sanitize their hands, they take their temperature. It must be below 38 degrees Celsius or 100.4 Fahrenheit. Our thermometer, for whatever reason, refuses to show us Fahrenheit, so we are working in Celsius. We haven't been able to figure out how to get it to do that, but we all know it's 38 degrees Celsius and we're all below 38 degrees Celsius from here. There are questions that they have to sign that they are answering, that they respond to. They are confirming that they have no COVID symptoms, those symptoms are listed. They are signing, signing that they have not traveled internationally within the last 14 days or out of state to a non-home location. So if, for example, you were traveling out of state and you were going from one home to another, if you're going to a home of a family member and then returning, you would not need to quarantine for 14 days. But currently, the way that that screening is being done, you would need to quarantine for 14 days. And then the last one has to do with what the procedure is if you have been exposed to somebody who was COVID-positive. So when we put the one about have you traveled internationally or outside of Michigan in the last 14 days, the outside of Michigan portion was something that was recommended in the county's screening process. And what I told the board was that it would be my intention to remove that particular piece. We would keep the have you traveled internationally, but we would not do the outside of Michigan in the last 14 days excluding commuting from a home location outside of Michigan. That we would take that part out when this governor moved the state to the state's stage five, which is where Michigan region six and eight, in other words, the UP, where they are right now. It was, it was anticipated that she would probably do that on, before July 4th, and things didn't go the way that we had hoped. And there were some increase, some uptick in the cases, and so she did not move us to stage five. However, Oakland County did remove the stipulation about traveling outside of Michigan in the last 14 days. So I guess what we need to do is determine whether or not we're comfortable removing that. Oakland County has removed it. But my stipulation was, my self-imposed stipulation was that I was waiting for the governor to move us to stage five. But there's nothing that says that there is, the state is not on any kind of a quarantine. So I guess before I make that change, I would like some board input on that, on how you feel about it.
Are you thinking, board?
I know, I didn't really mean to spring this one on you, but...
Well, I mean, I am personally being so cautious that every little, every caution that can possibly be taken, I'm in favor of, so I don't have a problem with leaving it as is, but I'm also, I'm not going anywhere. So I hate to be the one that's setting the standards for, because not everyone is in my situation where they're really, they can't go much of anywhere. Other people have a little more freedom than I do, so... That's my thought.
Where we're running in, where we're running into trouble is we do have some staff that are, that are taking some vacations, and they are leaving the state, and it is, it is pretty restrictive because basically what it says, the response is, is that you must quarantine for 14 days when you, if you leave the state of Michigan. It's very limiting in the summer. We do have our other measures in place, so we do have, we are taking temperatures at the door, we are wearing face masks, we are socially distancing.
And I can see where that's overly restricted, which is why, and again, because I have to be extra cautious, doesn't mean that everyone has to have exactly my level of caution. So I'm not opposed to taking it out, I just, but my thought is always, let's be careful, let's be careful.
True, it is true.
Allison, what's your point?
Well, I'm not sure I have a point, I have a question. So you're, you're looking to, the question that we're discussing is to remove excluding commuting from a home location outside of Michigan, correct?
It would be, it would be that the screening process would, would be, that question will be changed to have you traveled internationally, which seems to be what the standard screening question is for places right now.
I see, get rid of Michigan entirely.
Just, yep, the outside of Michigan part is the part that is not common at this point. The problem is, and the problem I'm struggling with a little bit is that I'm watching cases go up in other states and thinking, okay, how do we feel about this? We do have a lot of other safety measures in place in terms of the masks, in terms of the screening process. We are very good at socially distancing in our building at this point. So, as I said, I guess I just want to make sure that, that the board would be okay with me. I can investigate what other libraries are doing if they're using that requirement. I should not have tied it to the state going to stage five, I guess. Live and learn. It made sense to me because it sounded like that was the direction we were heading, and I was like, okay, well, when she says we're going to stage five, then I'll just go ahead and take that part out. But the county took it out, and...
They probably, because they have so many more employees, we're even running into more of an issue with people going on vacation. But it is scary what's happening in some other states where they're having thousands of new cases a day.
So, so if I was, if I was the patron and I was to say, the question remained as it is, and I was to say, yes, I just came back from Florida.
It's not the patrons, this is for staff.
For staff, that's what I was not understanding.
This is for, this is not for patrons, no, 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 no. This is for, this is quarantining staff. This is, this is my daily screening for the staff. So when the staff comes in, they have to sign something saying that they have not traveled internationally or outside of the state of Michigan in the last 14 days excluding commuting from home location outside of Michigan. And what's happening is, it has become so restrictive that if anybody leaves the state of Michigan but are staying somewhere other than a home location, they have to work from home for the next 14 days.
I see.
Which is really, we're running into some issues because, I mean, if they're staying in a hotel of any kind, if they're traveling at all.
Well, here's the rest of the question. How does the staff feel about removing that precaution? Are they, do they, do they as a whole want that precaution in there, or do they not want it in there?
Well, you know what, I think most of them aren't really, most people are not traveling out of state. I have, I have a few people that are, that are traveling outside of state. I do have some people that are planning on going on vacation in August, which is why I wanted to talk about this now. Most of, I would say the staff is making pretty good decisions about these kinds of things. There, there are a number of them that had trips planned that have canceled them. But what it, what it's limiting is, once we get to August, we do have some employees that have students that are going away to college. So if they take that student to college to drop them off, then they have to quarantine for 14 days when they get back. So that's where we're running into that.
I did travel out of state to a family dwelling. So we went through that, but we did not stay in a hotel. But I have talked to people who went up Traverse City, and the hotels were very careful with their screening. So it would sort of depend almost on the person evaluating how many situations they ran into during their travel that could be problematic. I said, I think we might be able to take that off and just discuss with the staff, you know, when you do this, or if you're out of state, if you feel that you've come into contact with people where this would be problematic, they should discuss this with you.
Yeah, but if I was, if I was a staff member, Julie, and I was to go to Texas, and I, I didn't meet anybody that was COVID, but we know it's a hotspot, so I might have been exposed indirectly. Do I have the option of working from home for two weeks if I'm concerned about? So I can isolate, this is, so I could do that, I could do that anyway. Then it seems to me that I'm more comfortable with removing it because...
Well, and, and the other thing we're doing is, we are, we are requiring face coverings. We are, I mean, all of those things are the things that are in place. So even if you come back, you have to take your temperature when you walk in the door, or you have to evaluate your symptoms and sign in, you know. So it, the problem is, it's a little bit restrictive in terms of people going, as I said, people going away and being careful and then being forced to be quarantined.
Does it make, but the flip side of that is that their coworkers, are any of the coworkers who are not going away going to be uncomfortable that someone else did leave the state and maybe stayed in a hotel or did whatever?
Well, that would give us, it would give us the opportunity to evaluate it.
Right, well.
You know, they could be somewhere within the state.
Absolutely.
That was problematic. You know, let's all go to the big get-together at Princess Zero, my cousin Sally's house or something.
Diamond Lake, Torts Lake, whatever that one was.
Yeah.
I, my, I feel there's enough protocols in place, and our staff are pretty level-headed. I really think we could leave that, whether they felt comfortable, into a discussion with you at the, in the given situation.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with that, Julie?
I think so. I, I think that it's restrictive to the point that, that it's causing, that I think it's going to cause more problems than it's going to solve. Because, like I said, when the county dropped it, the point at which I actually did the screening process, the county was trying to decide whether or not they were going to leave it in. And I, I went on the side of safety and I went ahead and put it in. But shortly thereafter, they took it out and they re-released their screening. This is a, the questions we're using are the ones that were recommended by Oakland County, their screening process. And so shortly thereafter, they took it out. And I thought, okay, well, I told the board I was going to leave it in there until we went to stage five, so I'm not going to do anything with it. But when I went online and looked, the recommended screening process from Oakland County no longer includes this piece.
But it does have international?
But it has international.
Of course, who will let us come? Most of our employees don't want to see any of us.
Nobody.
You say that I blame them. So they may not be able to travel internationally anyway.
Yeah. It was just restricted the point of 14 days of quarantine, just because you drove out of the state. I can see why Oakland County took it out, because it is very, very restrictive.
It would certainly be disruptive.
Would we like, would you like a motion on this?
I don't know that, I didn't need you to make a motion on the screening process, but I absolutely didn't want to do this without your knowledge. Because I had been pretty clear about, that was my tipping point. I had spoken to several of you, and I said that, and I didn't want to just pull it and then have you say, well, wait a minute, that's not what you said you were going to do, so. I guess if you'd like to make a motion, that's, that's...
Well, I feel like that this is, this is at the level of things that we've given you the authority already to do.
I think it is, but this one felt like I really needed your input on it because I, because I told you one thing, I didn't want to do something different than what I said.
No, that's good, I mean, that's good to bring it back, but just in terms of a motion. I, I mean, if you want a motion, I'll be happy to make one, I'm good at that.
We've given Julie input, that's what she wanted.
Yeah, the consensus seems to be that you would be comfortable with me taking it out at this point. And making sure that the staff knows that if they are traveling and they feel that they were in a place where they were not...
Where they could have been exposed.
Where they could have been exposed, where things were not being, safety measures were not what they feel are appropriate, then we would encourage them to self-quarantine for some period of time, and we would support that. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, that sounds, exactly right.
Okay. So then, the next, the next piece of...
Does Chris have any other, does Chris have a thought on this?
Oh, I agree, that's fine.
Okay, great.
Oh, great, thank you. So the next thing that I wanted to talk about in terms of, so as we are unrolling these various reopening plans, the next one is addressing, obviously, addressing patron needs is always sort of at the top of mind. And the patron need that we are, that are looking to address in our next step forward would be browsing the shelves. So we went from just doing curbside, where the patrons were not allowed in the building at all, and we kept hearing what we were running into was people needed notary, so we started doing notary via curbside, but that's not a super convenient way to do notary, I'll assure you that. We were doing it, it was working, but not great. So that was, that spurred us to move forward and open the lobby. The people needed computers, that copying and printing was something the patrons really needed, and there were not a lot of options for that. So we went to stage four in order to allow that to happen. So the thing that the public is looking for now is browsing the shelves. They want to be able to come in and pick out their own stuff. As any book lover knows, it is really, really hard to browse online and pick out your stuff and let somebody else pull it off the shelf, because you want to open up the cover and you want to look inside, and you, you can't remember the title of the book, but you remember by looking at the cover that you already read it. So that's what we're trying to address in this next stage. The libraries that are nearest to us, most of them have moved to this stage where they are allowing the public into the building for what they are calling grab-and-go. And since we're doing grab bags, we don't really want to call it grab-and-go because I think that would be confusing and misleading. But we're doing these grab bags of craft supplies for our programs. But what they're calling grab-and-go is that you come into the building, you pick out your books, you check them out, and you leave. You don't, you don't sit in the library and, and read in the building. The seating areas are not available. The computers would be available, but only by appointment. You get an hour. We would disinfect in between and that sort of thing. So that's the next stage that we're looking at, would be allowing the public to come in so that they could pick out their own books, that they could check them out at circulation, or they could check them out through the self-check.
I think browsing, browsing is a clear, I think all of our patrons know what browsing means.
Yep, yep. So even though stage five of our plan says that we would, we would do in-person programming and things like that, obviously, we wouldn't be doing that because it's not appropriate based on, at least not inside, indoor, inside, in-person programming. It's not, would not be allowed with the executive orders the way they are and that sort of thing. But I just wanted to get, make sure that the board knew that that's what we were talking about next and see if you had any feedback about timing on that. So Springfield has moved to that stage, Brandon has moved to that stage, Oxford has moved to that stage, Auburn Hills has moved to that stage, Bloomfield moved to that stage today. Orion has not, Orion is the same size as we are, they are moving a little more slowly. They also locked their book drop, though. So they had a much longer turnaround time. They, they had a lot to clean up in terms of, once they opened their book drop and the hoards of things that came back and whatever. So they're, they're a little behind, but some of these other libraries have been, have been doing this for, some of them a week or so. Bloomfield did start theirs today. The feeling that we've been getting is that their mask compliance has not been an issue. We've been open to the front of our building for the last week, and knocking on a mask compliance has not been an issue. The governor has extended that mask requirement, so that should help with masks if we were going to have trouble. The requirement says no mask in the service, so. I just wanted to talk to the board and see if you had any feelings on that in terms of taking that next step forward.
Julie, I have a question. In letting people browse, are we going to have them wear gloves? Because they're going to be taking books on and off on the shelf?
Well, so the way we were talking, there's a couple of different ways. The Clinton McComb Public Library did a nice video for their patrons, and what they were encouraging people to do, they were sort of training the patrons to browse with their eyes. Sounds like a little kid thing. But yeah, we could offer gloves. They also are using what's called a quarantining cart. So if you pull something off the shelf and change your mind, it would go on the quarantining cart. We are quarantining everything for 72 hours that is being returned. We could do the same thing with materials. So if you pull something off the shelf and change your mind, it would go on the quarantining cart. We are quarantining everything for 72 hours. It is being returned. We could do the same thing with materials that were being pulled off the shelf. But definitely encouraging people to be selective when they pull the materials off, you know, pull off things that you're pretty sure that you want to take. Like they do in the grocery store, they do encourage people not to pick up the fruit and put it back down, that kind of thing. So. But gloves definitely are something that we're talking about.
Harder to, to monitor.
It is definitely. It is definitely.
Yeah, and I just, you know, and, and, you know, I love picking out my own books, but, and I, but I, I'm having trouble seeing why. I just ask for what I think I might want to read. If I get it home and I already read it, I just put it in the pile to return. I don't feel like I'm seriously hampered because I always order multiple books at a time anyway. So now, I, I don't personally see why that should be a problem for people. I mean, yes, it's different. And some people don't do different very well, but. Because I can see where you could, you could create problems. Because it'll be difficult to, to police whether or not they actually are putting books on the quarantine cart.
Yeah.
Or putting them back on the shelf. But again, I'm not going to be coming in anytime soon because the doctor won't let me. So you don't have to like do everything to meet my needs. I'm just.
Julie.
The executive order, I'm, I'm sorry, Chris. What did you want to say?
Yeah, are you limiting the number of people in the library?
So the executive order requires that. As I said, what we're currently doing is we are limiting the, the public in the lobby to no more than five. We're limiting the people in the meeting room to no more than 15. And that is something that I probably should have mentioned earlier on. The executive order does state, the one that allowed the reopening, that for a building of less than 50,000 square feet, which would be us, that we are limited to 25% of our total occupancy. So I had the fire marshal, because part of the reason that we haven't opened to the public yet is because I had to call the fire marshal and have him come in. We had occupancy on various rooms, but we didn't have an occupancy on the main portion of the building. So he came in and he had to do occupancy and he did, we have occupancy on the youth activities room, we have occupancy on the, on the conference room, we have occupancy on the business center, we have occupancy on the meeting room. But that big open space and right there in front of the circulation desk and the lobby, we didn't have occupancy on any of that. So the occupancy for all of that space, not including the meeting rooms, would be 90 people. So 25% of that gets us down to 22 people and that's including staff.
Whoa.
Even if the staff is not in the public area, supposedly we're supposed to. So by the time you count the staff, we're only maybe allowed to have 10 people in the building at a time.
I mean, are people going to make appointments then or?
That, that's something we haven't decided. We could do that. We could do by appointment. We would definitely have to consider a time limit. And these other libraries that are allowing people in the building are, usually it's either 30 minutes or 60 minutes tops. Most of them are saying 30. You can come in and pick out your stuff and check out and go.
Okay, okay. Okay.
So no lingering. All of the seating would be roped off. All of the chairs would be upside down on the tables.
Okay, right.
Julie, has there, has there been a demand for this? Have people been asking for this in the community?
We've ta, well, yes, we've taken some heat. We've had some people who, who have said, I can go to the grocery store, why can't I go to the library? We've had a, we had one comment that curbside was silly and there was no reason why we shouldn't be able to, why haven't we been able to figure this out, how to open? So, so there has been some pressure. The majority of the public has been very supportive in how hard we're working and the things that we're trying to do. But, you know, the taxpayers are paying for service and it is our responsibility to figure out how to do that effectively. So I'm trying to balance that. And the next, the next piece is the, in addressing the patrons' needs, the next thing is browsing the shelves that we, that we've been asked for.
So you could be talking about what, another month or perhaps two months or who knows, right?
In terms of.
Before you get to phase six.
Oh, for, for phase six where we go back to normal, that phase six is going to be, where it's back to normal is going to be, I'm assuming, when we have a tested vaccine as well as a reliable treatment program. So stage five is about as far as we get to go until, until science can catch up with COVID.
It sounds to me that we need to have a, um, they're going to need to make a reservation.
Yeah.
Only have 10 patrons at a time.
Right, right.
That we could do by appointment.
Yeah. I mean, we do need to say, because of our, explain what our total capacity is, what the requirements are for a building of our size, that we have staff and therefore that means we could have like 10 people in the building who are not staff members. So we're going to need to work out a fair way to allow people to do that. So it's like reserving a computer. Reserve browsing time.
Yep. Well, the nice thing is there, there are a few libraries that, that felt more confident they were able to move forward. They didn't do the computer lab stage than we did. So their pressure was to open because they were not offering any kind of computer service. So we had, we had the intermediary step that a number of libraries didn't do, that they have just been doing curbside and now they're going to allow the public in. And they're doing computers and, um, browsing. Yeah, so.
I would be curious to hear how it went in terms of, um, the public cooperating with. Because it's so, it's, it's like a habit. You pull the book out, you look at, oh no, and you, it, you put it right back in.
Yeah.
Oxford was the first one of these libraries that I mentioned to open. They've been open for a couple of weeks actually. And they were actually thinking about, they had another step further that they were going to go. And it's been, it's been going fairly smoothly for them. They've been really positive about it. So we're, obviously the staff, we have a department head meeting tomorrow. We're going to be going over all of these details and we have a lot of procedural sorts of things to figure out. We do have an election coming up on August 4th and we are a polling location. So the point at which the, um, the meeting room needs to be a polling location, we lose our computer lab. We either have to tear the whole thing down because it has to be, we have to strip the room down. They can't have all that stuff in there. So we either have to take that all down for two days, for the Monday and Tuesday of the election and move on to the next step. Or we have to tear it all down, put it all back up again and just close the computer lab for two days. So that's, that's another, another thing that we've been taking into consideration.
Okay, well, and it, but if you move the computers back into the main part of the library, then if you have five or six people on computers, does that mean then you can only have four people browsing?
That's what that means.
Okay. I guess if there's only four people in there, it shouldn't be too hard to keep an eye on them and make sure that they are actually not pulling books off and putting them right back on the shelf. But I don't know. It just, it creates a questionable, I don't know.
Well, they need to know that that's the procedure too.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Because, because the turnout has been, you know, the, the number of people coming into the building has been pretty small because, I mean, there are a lot of people who are, who are high risk that are staying home, first of all.
Right.
And, you know, it's, it's summer and the weather's really nice and we're not doing in-person programming. So part of the reason we're so busy in the summertime is we have these huge events and people come swarming to the building. Right now, we're not doing any of that. So the people who are coming to the building are coming in to use the computer and that's just a handful of people. We are getting people who are popping in to pick up a book or two and just really want to run in and run out. And that's the one little piece that we're not able to do right now. And they're disappointed and we do, you know, take what they, you know, take their information down and run in and get them. But you can see sort of the frustration level. So in terms of our ability to execute it, I think that we have the ability. I think there's a lot of details to be ironed out still. I think there are libraries that are doing it and discovering it is possible. I mean, obviously grocery stores have been doing it for four months. And, and other businesses and that are doing it. And I guess that's part of the reason that we're struggling a little bit. But I wanted you to be aware that that's kind of the next thing that would be coming. And we do have people that are looking for it. So that's, I don't have a date in my head yet, but I do know that the election is, is going to be a tipping point for us. If, if we're not open by the time.
And certainly, you know, we, we trust you and the staff to do this in the best way possible. Because so far you've done everything in the best way possible. I, so.
Right.
I'm sure you guys can figure it all out.
And we leave it to you to do that.
Yes, we do. Because we're not, because we're not doing the day-to-day operations. We're not, it's not our job to micromanage. It's our job to set policy. And, and you guys always do such a great job. Why would we want to micromanage?
The thing that we're, thank you. The thing we're finding is that our patrons are as lovely as they've always been. That they come in and they are very curious about what they can do and what they can't do. And they ask a lot of questions when they come in. And they've been very understanding. It's the disappointment when you say, well, you need to stay in the lobby while I go grab your book for you. And they're like, oh. So that's, that's the part that we're kind of trying to.
Yeah. See, I personally love that feature. I'm here for my books and somebody comes running out.
The people who, the curbside, the curbside service has been great and we are doing a lot of curbside service. But, but for those people who are not, not as tech savvy or who really just want to be in the building and pull the books off the shelves themselves, I, that's, that's what we're struggling with right now.
Yeah, and I can understand that.
Well, let's see if we can see something where we can phase this in before the election.
Okay. And I think that's probably where we are because I, I know that, that when I told Bill, well, okay, so when the election comes here, we're going to have to either, we're going to take everything down. And he's like, you mean I have to take it down and put it back? And I was like, well, then we need to open the building. So, so that's kind of where we are in terms of figuring out the next step. So we are looking at what plexi shields we need in order to appropriately socially distance the computer in the building. One of the things that would make this, that is a pro for doing this as opposed to a con, is it would be easier to monitor everything. Right now, our staff is very spread out. So our building is actually, in normal circumstances, well-designed for monitoring. We've got our circulation and our information desk. They can see each other. In terms of the building itself, we have a lot of sightlines. It's really easy for us to be able to see everything that's going on. Right now, our computer lab is in a completely different room on the other end of the building. We have to have somebody in the lobby, somebody has to answer the phone, information calls, they're running back and forth. So we can't rely on each other the way we used to. And we're finding that it is a lot harder to staff the building when we're all separated out and we're not able to work as a, as a team as much. So that's one of the things that we've been struggling with as well.
And that, you're right. That's definitely a reason to look at doing it as opposed to a con. So that's good.
Yep. That was the first thing that somebody pointed out. It was like, well, if we were all where we could see each other again, it's, it would be easier to rely on each other. For example, if, if somebody in the computer lab were trying to help somebody, explain to somebody how to do something on the copier and there was another person needing help on a computer, they would be one person divided between the two. Whereas in our normal situation, the circulation desk would look over and say, oh, they, we need, and they would call the backup for another librarian to come out and help. So that, that's the part that we've lost in, in this, our building wasn't designed to work that way. We're learning.
I don't think we were ever going to have to do this.
No, yeah, no. So, so it sounds like everybody is comfortable with, with us kind of.
Working our way.
Taking on this next step, figuring out the details and you've given me sort of the things that you're looking for. Make sure that we've got mechanisms in place in terms of potentially appointments and how we're going to manage making sure people are quarantining those materials. That would make you, obviously everyone more comfortable. That sounds.
Yep.
Okay, all right. The last thing, and this is one that Annette brought up, was fines for library materials. We have been waiving fines. Basically because it is difficult for people to, well, first of all, they couldn't bring things back because they were locked at home. Now they're not locked at home. Now they can bring things back. And we put in a due date of July 6th and said, okay. Anything that was checked out while we were closed, it's time to start bringing that back. And people are starting to bring those things back. We have continued to waive fines because we've been quarantining for obviously 72 hours. You don't pay fines when there's a 72-hour quarantine and whatever. But one of the things that a number of libraries have done is moved to being fine-free, completely fine-free. We are currently fine-free. And I didn't know how the board felt about, about leaving it that way for some period of time or if there was any concern about trying to pick a date for reinstating fines and what kind of a mechanism to put in place for making that decision. Any thoughts on any of that?
I support fine-free. I think it's a great idea.
You think fine-free?
Yes, because you're still not giving them full access to the library.
Right. The only, yeah, I mean, certainly stay fine-free probably until I would guess at least the end of the year.
Okay.
I think it's a nice public relations thing to do, you know.
Well, it's not like that's our biggest moneymaker. I just have this, there's this little piece of me that says, well, if everybody knows there are no fines, then nobody's going to care about due dates at all. There's my trust in human nature.
Well, there, another library's. Go ahead.
I guess we could see how that played out. I mean, if we just say, well, we're not going to do fines until the end of the year because we're not, we're not giving people full access to the building during all of this. Kind of leave it open and then just see if people are sort of paying attention to due dates and returning materials, particularly materials that are in high demand.
Mm-hmm. Have hold on them.
Yeah.
Be data-driven.
Well, and, and a number of libraries have gone to a fine-free status already so that they're definitely ones that we could monitor what they've, what they've experienced as well. But it is a little bit of an experiment for us. From the standpoint of the audit, financially, we're in pretty good shape. There are a couple of revenue lines that are, are a concern. State aid obviously is a concern. There's a very large budget deficit at the state level. And then penal fine money is a big concern because penal fine money comes from traffic violations primarily and court costs, which haven't been happening as well. So, but in terms of the health of our, of our budget, I think we're in pretty good shape. So I'm not.
Allison?
Thank you. And fine-free doesn't mean that there's no repercussions. It just means that eventually there's going to be a due date. Eventually you're going to have to return it. You won't, you'll either be charged for the material or you return it. It's not like we're giving the material to people. It just means that.
No, I know, but, but in terms of if you've got a, a hot book that there's like eight people waiting to, to get it and the person who has it, there's no fine, are they gonna, you know, are they going to bring it back in a timely fashion? Or are they gonna hang on to it for a month while the waiting list gets longer?
It's a good question.
You are giving them due dates though, right?
Mm-hmm. Oh yeah, they have due dates again. One of the reasons that we're, that we were fine-free, not just because people don't have full access to the building, but the point at which we reopen, we wanted to minimize money handling.
Oh, yeah.
Which is also a good reason.
So we are, right before we closed, we, the board approved the purchase of a credit card payment system for our copier printer, which we did put in place. So that's how they're paying for it now is, and we do have the ability to make some change. But pretty much it's being done by credit card, which is fine. And also the circulation. So people can pay for lost materials and, and they can do that online. We've got lots of options. That was part of that three-stage plan. In terms of, you know, you can pay for, pay for something with a credit card at circulation. And then we added, you could pay for it online. And then we added, you could pay for it at the self-check stations. And now you can pay for copies and printouts with a credit card as well. So we do have all of the options open that people can pay using a credit card. Which I know is the preferred method of payment for a lot of businesses right now as well because it minimizes money handling and allows for easier social distancing. So. So at least that part isn't something that. So at least that part isn't something that we're, but it is, we have minimized the amount of money handling that we, we would be doing upon opening. So it sounds like just sort of leaving it fine-free maybe till the end of the year.
And kind of revisit it. I would be interested in hearing, you know, how other libraries who have gone to a fully fine-free status, you know, how things come back in and, and are people kind of paying attention to the due dates?
Yeah. Okay. Other libraries and what their experiences are.
Because it's not like it's a big, it's not a big financial, you know, we don't make tons of money out of fines and that's, and with the automatic renewal, you know, that even cut that back even more.
Yeah.
Right, and we are alerting patrons.
Absolutely.
That, yep.
Of the automatic.
Okay.
Email notifications and text notifications.
Right, and you'd have to, you know, have some policy in place, something along the lines of, gee, if you, you know, if you have X number of materials that have passed X number of days past their due date, you can't check anything new out or something, right?
You can't access anything online. Maybe, maybe we would block their, you know, access, you know.
Something, I mean, like you said, it has, you know, as, as long as there's something in place that, that encourages very strongly that people keep the materials circulating and coming back in. I think we probably, all right, because it's not like we're making a ton of money.
No, it's actually, as much as people feel sometimes put upon by, by what their fine is, it's less than 1% of our budget.
Right.
It's just a reminder, that's what.
It's, it is, it's mostly a reminder.
Right.
Okay, so I will, I'm going to go ahead and say that, that we will play it by ear till the end of the year.
Right.
And, and I'll collect some data as we go and we'll, we'll revisit this at a later date. And that'll, and that'll make Annette feel better in terms of, because she was kind of trying to decide what to do about that, so.
Oh, okay.
That sounds good.
That is my, that's my, my overly long COVID report, sorry.
No, it's good.
A lot.
That's all right, that's what we need to discuss. Let's move to number three.
Okay.
Permission to post the head of the circulation.
Oops, I got the wrong thing here, hold on. Patreon page, okay. So Annette Chaney, our beloved head of circulation, has turned in her letter of resignation so that she may spend more time with her young grandson. She has agreed to stay with us into August. She gave me her last day is August 22nd. So she's giving us a nice long time and I do really appreciate that. So you have a job description in your board packet. That is the job description that was approved along with the 2020 budgets and it includes the salary range as recommended by the staffing committee for 2020. This is a key leadership role and has been budgeted. Some adjustments might be needed for insurance coverage depending upon the needs of the chosen candidate, but due to COVID-related reductions in healthcare costs, which we talked about during my director's report, there is some additional money in the healthcare line item. So I'm requesting permission to post that position.
And I don't think we need to update it since it's almost brand new.
Yeah, that's fairly.
It's in pretty good shape.
Fairly current.
I'll accept a motion.
I move that we approve the posting of the position.
There's a second? Okay, did you get that, David? Yes. Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve permission to post the head of circulation position as presented. Any other comments or questions? If not, let's take the roll call for those in favor.
Jan Gephney?
Yes.
Allison McDevene-Kuesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
And Chris DeShaw.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion has carried. And are there any other concerns that we need to address tonight?
I tried to, I tried to squeeze them all into the front end of the meeting and I apologize because I, I always try to keep your meeting to around an hour and COVID has just eaten me up in that regard, so.
You're doing a great job, Julie. Thank you, thank you.
Very succinct, that's good.
Yes.
I do the best I can. I want you to be in the loop, I need you to know what's going on, so.
And it's harder to do it this way when we're not popping in and out of the building the way we used to, so. And I miss that so much.
I miss you guys popping in and out of the building. Some of you have been able to do a little bit of that and I appreciate the visits because it's nice to see you guys.
All right, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Allison, second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. Please call the roll.
Jan Gephney?
Yes.
Allison McDevene-Kuesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?